You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting of the Michigan City Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July sixteenth, Michigan City City Council meeting. If you would please silence all electronic devices, stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer.
The United States of America is a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, take the roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry?
Present.
Mr. Coulter?
Present.
Mr. Dabney?
Present.
Mr. Cora?
Present.
Ms. Lee?
Present.
Ms. Molenhauer?
Here.
Mr. Nelson? Mr. Preszwalinski?
Here.
Ms. Tillman?
Present.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, approval of the minutes. Everyone had a chance to review the minutes. Is there any corrections?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Councilman Cora and seconded by Councilman Corta, Court, Cortal, I'm sorry, Coulter, I'm sorry, Greg. Madam Clerk? On the approval of the minutes, well, everybody just signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Reports of standing committees. Are there any reports of standing committees this evening? Okay, no reports of standing committees. Reports, Finance Committee meeting?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. President. The City of Michigan City Finance Committee meeting did not hold meeting on today due to that there was no claims. I would like to read to you the City of Michigan City twenty twenty-four Riverboat Fund Statement of Cash Position Fiscal Year-to-Date, seven thirty-one twenty twenty-four, unexpendable balance, eight million four hundred ninety-two thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars forty-two cents. There was a question that was brought to my attention. Would you like me to address that if that was in? Oh, okay, then disregard that. That is the unexpendable balance as of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The claims docket for July sixteen, twenty twenty-four. There's no claims this evening, so we don't have to vote on any claims. Reports from boards and commissions? Reports from, report from any boards or commissions? Having none, reports of special or select committees? Councilman Beatry?
The tax abatement Select Committee met on July eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Attendings were, attendees were myself as Chair, Daisy Lee, City Councilwoman, Liliana Franco, and Carolyn Edwards from the EDC Economic Corporation and ALCO. Though I'll read the minutes, the, I think all the council people have them, but for the benefit of the public. Councilman Beatry called the meeting to order at six oh one. He shared that there were twelve companies requesting abatement. Sixteen separate abatements requested, four companies had two. The total real estate investment for all companies was thirty-one million four hundred two thousand three hundred fifty-eight dollars, and the total equipment investments is ninety-eight million ninety-four thousand one hundred seventy-six dollars. Some companies are struggling to meet economy or employee projections and have sent letters explaining their difficulty and confirming their good faith efforts. None of the companies fell below fifty percent of their employee projection, and seven of the companies were over one hundred percent of their projection. All applications are in good order. Mr. Beatry asked if there were any specific questions involving individual companies. Hearing none, he asked Councilwoman Lee if she would like to make a recommendation to be included in the minutes. She moved that we recommend passage of all the abatement requests as submitted, seconded by Mr. Beatry and approved unanimously. There being no further business to conduct, the meeting was adjourned at six oh six P M.
Thank you, Councilman Beatry. Any other reports of special or select committees? I don't believe so. Reports for Mayor? She's not here this evening or any other departments? Clarence Halls is on the agenda, but I don't see him here this evening. Oh, okay.
Good evening. Um, I'll read a letter on behalf of Clarence Halls, who was not supposed to make it.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Can you?
Yeah, pull it, pull it down there. There you go.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay. On behalf of the EDCMC, I am presenting the annual tax abatement compliance for companies in the city that were granted abatements by the city for investments in personal property and/or real property. In addition to the CF one forms for each tax abatement, you have a cover sheet summarizing the overall statistics for fifteen abatements for the thirteen companies. Hurst Side and Aquagenics have multiple abatements. As the summary indicates, ten companies have complied based on their projected job creation and investments, and four have struggled with their hiring goal but have made continuous efforts to meet their employment rate. The EDCMC followed up with companies below the job projections and received the following explanations. Market conditions such as lack of qualified employees, supply chain, supply chain and market conditions during post COVID, the disruption in the supply chain process and COVID nineteen recovery have played a significant role in the three companies that could not meet their employee hiring goals. I would recommend that the Common Council certify these compliance statements of benefits. The companies not in compliance are due to a lack of qualified employee availability, market forces, and COVID nineteen pandemic post-recovery, and therefore out of the company's span of control. In addition, companies are competing not only with inflation and supply costs, but also with the need to increase pay rates, hours, and benefits as means of attracting and retaining qualified candidates. They are all actively recruiting, and we monitor their progress annually. Once approved, the council president will need to sign, oh, do I need to read that? We'll need to sign the second pages of the CF one forms, and then the city clerk's office will submit them to the county auditor for processing. Thank you, Clarence Halls.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions about anything that was reported upon? Okay, thank you very much. And I believe at this time, it says that we have to take a vote to approve the CF one applications. Is there a motion?
Some. Report for support.
Okay, there was a motion by Councilman Cora and seconded by Councilman Beatry. Madam Clerk, on the vote?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Molenhauer?
Aye.
Mr. Preszwalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Cora?
Aye.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any petitions before us this evening?
There are no petitions.
Are there any communications?
There are no communications.
Are there any resolutions?
There are no resolutions.
And our purse ordinance this evening by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, an ordinance adopting and establishing designated outdoor refreshment areas in the City of Michigan City, Indiana, in creating Article six and Chapter twenty-six of the Michigan City Municipal Code, introduced by Mr. Coulter.
And does the author have anything he'd like to add at this time?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what this ordinance is, and Mr. White's going to help me show a couple of maps that we have coming up. So first off, what is a DORA? So Doras are something that the state established a couple last year, or maybe the year before, that cities can have in their municipalities. So a few of them that have started those, such as Jeffersonville down on the Ohio River, and then Fort Wayne has a couple, and there's a few other examples around the state. So in these areas, you're able to like go into one of these restaurants. So we've got on the screen, we've got the lakefront one pulled up. So if you go into like Fish Camp, you would be able, if they follow through with it, you would be able to go in, order a drink, and then go back outside. So maybe you want to walk to the lighthouse with a drink or something, or you get one at Sunset Grill, and then you can walk outside instead on the beach. So you're not confined to that restaurant, but you're able to support it. So the pushback that I've heard from a few people, just to anticipate that, is that they think it's going to look like New Orleans out there, and it's not. So number one, it's got some boundaries to it. So for the lakefront one, you can see where you can't leave the red boundary, which is pretty generous. Basically, this is saying like, don't go to the zoo with a drink. Drew, can you show the next one? So the downtown one has, the boundaries are a bit more applicable. So say you buy a drink at Leeds, you're really not allowed to cross the streets of the library or something. So it stays within those boundaries. You also have the, the limit where the bartender isn't going to over serve people. They're still obligated to keep people under a certain level of sobriety. And then, of course, with these, we've got stipulations that there's no carry-in alcohol, and I'm not sure how much that's going to stay. Working with Tremel, we're, we're working on that. Because for the beachfront, I want to make sure that people can still take a cooler to the beach. But here downtown, for First Friday or something, you wouldn't just walk in with your own alcohol. Instead, you would support one of those local businesses. So some of the next steps should this pass first reading, and I think that's just how that works. We're going to have a workshop, so I'm going to work with you guys to figure out what day to do that. I'm thinking like a Wednesday at maybe nine A M. And then part of that workshop is coming up with some of the things that the state stipulates within that DORA legislation, which is to have a single logo on all of the cups, which is another limit that I didn't touch on, is that people have to drink out of a certain cup. So that way, if somebody, if we're at a parade and somebody's walking around with a red solo cup from home, you know, that's not somebody supporting a local business. And then signage as well. So signage that lets you know that you're leaving the DORA district. And that is all I have to present right now, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. So anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this ordinance?
Yeah, Tommy Klawick, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I think there's a problem here because I believe maybe about, maybe ten years ago, the council did pass an ordinance that is prohibited to consume any alcohol on any open alcohol on any of the streets or the sidewalks within, in the City of Michigan City. I remember a few years ago, there were a couple of women that came for the Board of Works, and they wanted to have the pedal pub. It's kind of like a bicycle bar that you ride up and down the streets. And our attorney, Amber Lepesha Staub, pretty much denied it because, you know, they had ordinance, very ordinance. I know they have those in Indianapolis, and they look like they're very fun. I thought they would have been a fun thing for us to do, but, you know, I, I think this just needs to be shot down. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Scott Mellentour at Kedwood Place, sounds like a great idea to me, and I support, I would encourage you to all support it. We're, we're going to be, we're a tourist-focused town in the summertime, and it's quite nice, you know, for responsible people clearly, which is what it's intended for. This isn't, we're not going to become New Orleans. It took them a while to get their reputation. But it's kind of civilized to be able to order a beer and then leave the establishment to go on with your festivities. So I think it's a great idea that should be further explored. But yeah, we need signage, and maybe instead of a unique cup, each establishment would probably want their own branding, but there's also the right logo, two logos, something like that. But clearly worth exploring, in my opinion. So I encourage you to look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Brian Bros, eighty thirty West Sixth Street. My question would be, are there going to be hour limits on this? Can it be all day, all night till three A M? Or are there going to be hours like five P M till midnight that they can actually carry out? Thank you.
Can I respond to that, Mr. President?
Pardon?
Can I respond to this question, Mr. President?
Sure.
So as it's written, I think, is it twelve to twelve?
Pursuant to the state statute. As the stat, as the ordinance is currently written, it's twelve to twelve pursuant to state statute. There has to be timelines baked within the ordinance, and the state gives kind of the bookends for those. It can't be sold prior to, I believe, eight A M. It can't be, alcoholic beverages can't be sold later than three A M the following day.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public who wants to speak on this ordinance? Any council comments? Councilman Cora?
Yes, President. I, I think it's a good idea, as has been mentioned, you know, ours is a tourist town, and people do come to enjoy. But I think when we have our workshop, we should get the, the police and law enforcement into a conversation to see how we can do this with safety and security, that way people can have fun in a safe and secure environment. Thank you.
Councilwoman Tillman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to add, this does sound like something I would like to see too, to come to fruition. When I read this, it made me think about being in Indianapolis, and if you're familiar with Broad Ripple, and it somewhat makes me think it's no different when you have these beer tents, beer festivals. They're downtown, but they're still in a secluded restricted areas. I don't see that this will be any different from that. So, good job.
Any other questions, comments? Councilman Beatry?
I think this is a good idea, too, and I, Bobo, I think you're probably going to take some heat because of this, and I'm willing to take some heat with you. So I'd like to be a co-sponsor. Is this going to be a workshop for us all, or is this going to be to a?
Yeah, well, Councilman Coulter said he's going to call a workshop. He's just trying to figure out
Okay, great.
the right day and the right time, correct?
Yeah, and then just working with the schedule, too. So I'm thinking a Wednesday, probably at nine A M or something, so that some of these bar owners can make it to it.
Okay, if, if I may, if I may, since you suggested nine A M. I mean, just in, just in, in my personal opinion, for the public that wants to attend, and for the council members that have to work during the day, it might be more considerate to have it like at four thirty in the evening, or, because I know Councilwoman Tillman works, right?
Because the, the restaurant owners are going to, the, the restaurant owners are going to want to be there, and they're busy at five thirty in the evening.
At what time? Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, you got time to think about it. You don't have to decide right now. I'm just saying, in consideration of all the council members and the public, because a lot of times, you know, the public can't make meetings at nine o'clock, and you would, I think, in a ordinance like this, you'd like to get all the public input you can and get their ideas and questions, just to make sure everything is nice and clean when you come, bring it back to the council meeting. Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions, comments about this ordinance? Having none, we will hold this over for a second reading at our next meeting. And from there, we go to huh, new business. And FYI, the council has one appointment to the Urban Enterprise Association due to Tommy Amico's resignation. And the next term, or the term will begin immediately and expire twelve thirty-one twenty-four. So I, I would think as an FYI, at the next meeting, we'll be taking nominations for this position. So if you have anyone that you want to get on the committee, have their name ready, and we'll go from there. Councilwoman Molenhour?
I'm wondering if we've had any applications of interest that would be able to be sent to the city council members before the next meeting. That would be extremely helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, and since you asked that question, I think there is maybe five applicants that are in already. Councilman Beatry?
According, I don't know if this is the last one, but the last sheet we got, it's updated April fifteenth. Boards of Commission applications show that there are two people interested in urban enterprise, Willie Crump and Damon Hopkins.
Okay.
Pardon me?
There's six tall. I'll send that list out tomorrow.
Oh, okay, so I need a new list.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Okay, new business. That's all we have there. And that takes us to public comment? Yeah, that takes us to unfinished business. No unfinished business that I'm aware of. Is there any unfinished business any council members can think of? Okay, comments from the public, comments from the public. Three-minute timeframe.
Oh, Tommy Klawick, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Just want to remind everybody, maybe in the next couple of weeks, the school board meeting is going to be, we're probably going to be introduced to our new superintendent to succeed Dr. Barb Reese Watkins. I just want to just remind everybody that, uh, when they, he's going to be back to school by the time we have our next council meeting in three weeks, and it does happen to be the ten-year anniversary when when the Michigan City Schools made the executive decision to close what ended to become an Elston Middle School. Pretty much then, all our students on the west side, they all got to be bused to a whole different section of the city, get their education beyond the sixth grade. Like to maybe see a consolidated middle school. I know this is a school board, but I really think we need a consolidated Michigan City Middle School in the middle of town. Go back to grades K, K through five, six through eight, and nine through twelve. I know that was the format the whole time. I went through the Portage Township School Systems. It's just my comments and thoughts and opinions on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public who wants to speak this evening?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. President, Council. Real quickly on Greg's proposed ordinance. It wouldn't be a free-for-all. There's state ordinance that overrides it. And there's already rules in place, so we would comply with that. On the tax abatements, I, I viewed the entire six-minute forty-seven second meeting, very efficiently run, Mr. Beatry. Based on your report, it sounds like people are doing what they're supposed to do, but a number of companies were only, were below the fifty percent hiring level. I understand they're having difficulties, but I'm wondering if there might be some probationary period or some warning given to them that if they don't meet these limits, that they are at risk of losing further abatement. This is an idea.
Ask him.
Go ahead, Councilman.
There, no one was under fifty percent. Some were close, but everyone was at fifty percent or better on their, what they projected they would do. And I, if my memory serves, and maybe Daisy can help, I think three of them, they were in their last year of the abatement.
Super, super. Just briefly, because my real issue here tonight is trash. We're having a lot of issues about our garbage system in the city. And I've gotten mixed messages. On W F M, it said that there's no longer special pickups except the two spring and summer cleanups. Again, there's, this is what's been announced on the radio. So there's confusion out there. To that end, in our ward, I took a drive through my neighborhood today briefly, around Boyd Circle, Garrettson, Euclid Avenue, and I counted thirteen separate piles of refuse that haven't been picked up, from a single cabinet to a single recliner chair, to a couch, to a couple sets of mattresses. We have a problem. People who live here expect to be able to put these bulky items out, and it'd be cleared away, and they're not being. I checked out Pullman Park last week to see where the new farmer's market was going to be, and I took a tour of the area around there. I think it was mattress throwout day. There must have been six different sets of mattresses in the parkway in that immediate area. So if we don't pick it up, we're going to have other problems. So this is clearly something that I know we're thinking about, but it has to be more than just penalties and warnings. It has to be the garbage gets picked up at the end of the day. So I would, I, you know, let, let's think this through and figure out what we're doing, because that makes the city look bad, and none of us like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comments closed. Council comments? No council comments? Councilwoman Tracy Tillman?
Just a quick P A. Thank you, Mr. President. Quick P A. The Back to School Rally will be forthcoming on August tenth, which will be held at Elston Guildsfield from eleven to three P M. So if you have a student, child, or children, identification will need to be present, come out, they'll be giving away backpacks. There'll be games and some good camaraderie with vendors that will be present. Other resources will be out there as well. So just a reminder, the Back to School Rally, Michigan City Back to School Rally will be on August tenth.
Thank you. Councilwoman Molenhour?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. At the last city council meeting, we talked about the huge amount of trash that's going to the landfill for Michigan City. And one of the points is that we do need to recycle more, and I was able to see Sacha G. Burns at the La Porte County Fair, and ran this by her, and she said, it's not just an issue with Michigan City, it's the City of La Porte, it's La Porte County, it's all of us who are not recycling enough. So another approach to tackle this is, the next step actually is to reduce and refuse. So Save the Dunes is actually offering a Zoom event on this. It's called Reduce and Refuse Northwest Indiana Has a Plastic Problem. And this is happening on Monday, July twenty-ninth at twelve noon, and that is a Zoom event that is available by link on their Facebook page or the Save the Dunes webpage. So I invite everybody to attend that. Recycling is one thing, but also reducing and refusing is the other part of reducing what's going to landfills. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Councilman Cora?
Mr. President, I have two items. One is, we're going to have a Health and Safety Committee meeting tomorrow morning at nine o'clock to address the issues of parking with, on the lawns and areas which we should not be parking, and sidewalks and things like that. So it'll be held at nine A M tomorrow morning at the community room at the Michigan City Police Department. That's number one. And number two, I just want to echo Councilman Nancy Modernar's ideas about recycling. I know, we're all slaves of habit, and I really think that these habits are formed when, during childhood. I think it'll really be helpful. You know, when I was on the Solid Waste Board, they do go into the schools and they do some education. I, I think we need to probably ramp it up a little bit more, because if we can, if we can catch them, yeah, and get into this habit, I think in the future will be better. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, just want to speak again. We've, we've talked about trash now, maybe four or five consecutive meetings. And we understand the problems and, and how it's all working, and that's why we had the mayor, along with a couple of the other department heads, talking about trash pickup and what we're trying to do moving forward. So there are plans in the works to get this done, but it just doesn't happen overnight. So this is something that I'm sure all of us are, you know, take very seriously, as well as the people in the public that bring these issues up to us. We want to see a clean city, and, you know, I do want to see us enforce, you know, these rules and put stiff penalties to people who dump out these houses onto the, you know, the side of the streets. Once again, I will stand by this every single time. I think we need to start charging these people more than it costs to get a dumpster. Plain and simple. And I think that would correct some of the behavior. We do have to pick it up at some point, but we're putting our people at jeopardy. And I know from living here in Michigan City all of my life and seeing what's going on now, so many rental properties and that, that a lot of people are doing this and throwing these things out, and if we fine only a hundred dollars or whatever it may be, they just see this as the cost of doing business. And it's time for that to change. And I believe from what we heard at the last meeting, that the mayor feels the same way, as well as her department heads that are out there picking up trash, and hopefully we can get this together, because like he said, this does make us look bad as a city, and I'm sure all of us feel the same way, and we're ready to tackle this issue.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Any other council comments? Councilwoman?
Um, in addition to the Back to School Rally with the Michigan City Area Schools, P N W, Purdue University Northwest is also hosting a backpack giveaway. It'll be on August first from four P M to six P M at the Hammond Campus.
Uh, it'll be on August first, from four PM to six PM, uh, at the Hammond Campus and at the Westville Campus. So they're doing it at both campuses.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comments? I just have a couple, and the first one, I want to thank Shannon Easton with her hard work and efforts with putting the, uh, ban shell renovation program, uh, in place and getting that done. I think she worked on that particular program. I don't know, maybe every bit of a year and a half, and raised over, I think the total was four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars uh, to get that ban shell renovated. And she, they had the dedication what, two Saturdays ago, I think it was, a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, there were about a hundred people in attendance. The mayor was there, gave a, gave, gave a nice speech, as long as, and so did, uh, Shannon. And, uh, there was remarks by the Michigan City Historical Society President, uh, Keith Rogers. And there was also, oh, the hot dogs and root beer by Carlson's. You know, one of the highlights of the evening. They don't, they provided that, so that was good. But anyway, uh, the folks that donated towards this was the local Michigan Coastal Grant Program, a hundred and eighty thousand. Michigan City Historical Society donated five thousand, the Unity Foundation, fifty-four thousand. And the Barker Welfare Foundation, fifty thousand. And the city council, through the ARP, uh, money, was a hundred and forty thousand. So close to four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars to get that done. And I just wanna thank Shannon and all the, uh, donators to this project, uh, cause that ban shell, as we all know, is a piece of history to Michigan City. And it's just beautiful to, to, uh, look at that all the time, and when it's lit up. So I wanted to comment on that, and the, uh, LaPorte, I wanna thank the LaPorte County Highway Department, cause I had got a complaint about the bridges. Well, let me go back. The LaPorte County Highway Department maintains seven bridges in Michigan City. Alright, and one of the bridges they maintain is a bridge that goes over, that's on Springlin Ave, that goes over Trail Creek over by Potawatomi Golf Course. And that bridge has become so overgrown with vegetation that I finally got to find out who's responsible for what. And they finally came out this morning and started on the north side. They're gonna do the south side. And I just want to, uh, thank the Assistant Superintendent Andy uh, Simon Breimer, and the tractor operator, Don Davis, for coming out and doing a, uh, great job. But it's gonna get cleaned up once and for all, and we shouldn't have to look at that. And the neighbors in the area shouldn't have to look at that. And we're getting that taken care of. And the, uh, other issue I brought up, I don't know, maybe a month ago, talking about the South Shore properties and grass, uh, maintain the grasses. I took a ride uh, last Friday, and still to this date, I'm not satisfied with the condition that the South Shore has left Michigan City in. And I know that apparently the, uh, city planner and the city engineer had a, uh, talk with Nick D. and trying to get some resolution to this, but I haven't heard anything yet. And I'm hoping that the, uh, city planner can come to the next council meeting and address the council on this issue. So we know, uh, where we're headed and what direction and what progress we may, we may be making. Cause if I, if I were neighbors that lived in those neighborhoods and had to get up every day and look at that mess, you know, take for example, the folks that live on the west side along Tenth Street there, where the double track runs. They have to look at trash along that fence line. They have to look at grass that's now eight feet, eight, not eight feet, but, uh, eight inches, ten inches high. City ordinance is six inches. We all know that. And, uh, you know, they refuse to, uh, maintain it. And it should be not pristine, but it should look nice. Cause I remember, Councilman Dabney remembers when we were going through the plans with the, with Nick D, and how everything was gonna look. In that corridor along from the Amtrak tracks going down to Sheridan Avenue, it looked like a beautiful, well-maintained uh, area. Well, it doesn't look that way now, so they need to, uh, buck up and take responsibility for that. So the trash, and I'm gonna comment, uh, same thing as Councilman Dabney said, and I get calls quite a bit about trash, you get approached about it. And I know it's an issue. We all know it's an issue. The mayor addressed it, the department heads addressed it last meeting. Uh, and like they said, they had to take care of the garbage first, and they're gonna get to the pickups next. It's very evident that, number one, they don't have enough employees. They have the equipment. They don't have enough employees. They don't have enough trained employees. They hire people. Employees don't even come to work. They don't even show up. It's not like they call up and say, hey, I'm quitting. You know, I've got a job somewhere else. These guys, people don't show up. So it's kinda hard running that department right now. And I believe at the last sanitary district meeting, they just gave the truck drivers of the refuse trucks like a two dollar fifty cent an hour raise, and they gave the loaders a two dollar an hour raise. Hoping that that will, uh, entice these people to stay and to get more employees. So, the issue is being addressed, not being addressed fast enough that we'd like to see. But the city's working on it, and we'll get there. Maybe not quickly, but we're gonna get there sooner than later. And that's all I have to, uh, address tonight. Any other comments from the council? Yes, ma'am. Oh. Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, the mayor wanted me to announce that there's gonna be an opioid workshop roundtable on Thursday, July twenty-fifth, uh, from five to seven PM, right down here in the EOC room. So, that is, uh, a week from Thursday, I believe, yeah. And it's gonna be right here. EOC Room, five to seven, opioid workshop roundtable. And is there a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Council meeting is now over. Thank you.